Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April fifteenth, twenty nineteen Muscatine City Council Meeting. Thank you for coming. Cinda, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember spread. Harvey.
Here.
Brockert.
Present.
Saseo.
Here.
Brackett.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Malcolm.
Present.
Six present, zero ap- one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Will you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to council about something that's not on tonight's agenda? Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Hello?
Yes.
Can everybody hear me? Alright, my name is John Perrin. I live at nine eleven Hancock Street, here in Muscatine, Iowa. Um, I've lived, you know, at nine eleven Hancock Street for twenty-two years, and pretty much been happy to live there. It's been, you know, the past two and a half years, there's been a development that's gone in across the street at nine tw- uh, at nine twenty-two Hancock Street, and there's been a lot of nuisances from that situation, and I, towards, you know, I feel a lot of those nuisances I've had to deal with directly, um, being is that I live right across the street from that. And, uh, excuse me. So, uh, there's some proposals that are gonna be coming up from, from this address about, you know, um, vacating of rightaways, um, and development of building a building in a parking lot. And it was kind of, it concerns me, so I dug into it a little bit, and it was kind of brought to my attention that I've, that their entrance and exit of this development is gonna be directed directly at my residence, which of, uh, both noise, light, you know, all kinds of pollutions, trash, everything that I've been dealing with, and to taking up both sides of the street, to rutting up my front yard, to just all kinds of things that I just kinda, you know, just kept under my cap type scenario. And it just concerns me that, you know, that this proposal, you know, to do this, and it may directly affect, you know, my property value, you know, my resale ability of my house, and even, you know, possibly the quality of life here in Muscatine, you know, if I continue to live at that residence. And I just wanted to make sure that every council member here, in the upcoming months, or whatever this takes, you know, for this process, for this, that they're kinda, maybe kinda keeping their eye on it. And, you know, I've encouraged you to, you know, take it upon yourself to go ahead and drive by this situation, whether it's in the next month, two months, three months, whatever. And I really appreciate y'all, y'all, for your service, and thank you much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Before you sit down, Councilman Saseo would like to address.
John, we, we have actually followed up on that. I know that, that I have made calls and talked with development, with the community development in regards to looking at the drawings of what this new proposal's gonna be.
Okay.
Um, complaints that I have received in regards to parking on both sides, took pictures of that, shared that with, with the community development as well, too.
Okay.
The final proposal that you're discussing.
Right.
That's something that, that we have not completely seen, so I think we're gonna still have a discussion about that before we approve that. So just keep that in mind. We're, we're obviously gonna be cognizant of what your concerns are.
Right, and I, I understand that. I, I do think, you know, that I'm kinda here preemptive, and what I wanna do is, is I just wanna make sure that every, every council person has kinda, kinda got it on the radar, 'cause it is a huge concern of mine. Uh, it's just something that, it's kinda been bothering me as of late, and I'm, I'm not sure that I really would like, you know, a taxi service, or whatever, having an entrance of twenty-five-plus vehicles plus buses directed at my house. I, you know, I, this.
I, again, I.
When there's alternatives.
I think, I think Andrew wants to talk about it, because I've, I've followed up on this probably three or four times already, just due to so many calls and discussions that I've seen, and I've went down there and looked at that personally. So I'd like to see if Andrew could probably propose and maybe comment on what we've seen, 'cause I've seen just a little bit of those drawings and requests, 'cause I followed up on that, asking when are they gonna do that to avoid the amount of congestion and parking that we've seen already on both sides there.
Well, I mean, in any community development of any kind, whether it be completely residential, commercial residential, whatever blend you wanna put to it, okay? I mean, you can't overly excessively use and abuse a street, especially one that's a dead-end street. It was, it was primarily residential.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of things that, you know, I really wish they could be addressed, and I'm just bringing this idea to the council. That's all. I don't wanna overstate.
We appreciate you taking the time to come out and talk to us tonight.
Okay.
And we'll have more information as we move forward.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Mayor, council, just to provide, provide a little background of where we're at in the process, is, uh, the, the business, non-emergical medical transport, they've submitted a rightaway vacation request to help accommodate the parking structure for their vehicles. The planning and zoning reviewed that request at their meeting on Tuesday. Um, from there, it's gonna be coming to you to look at specifically the rightaway vacation request. At the next meeting, you'll be asked to set up, have, pass a resolution to set a public hearing. Then on whatever the third Thursday in September is, we'll have a specific public hearing on this agenda item. Simultaneously, the, the business owner has submitted a site plan. Um, our first, our first meeting in the staff site plan review with him will be Wednesday. Um, so there has been no driveway locations that have been approved. They have submitted something, uh, you know, we'll, we'll review it, and I think, uh, Mr. Perrin is concerned that how that would line up with any adjoining houses will be paramount into what we will or won't approve, but without having had that meeting with him, you know, it's not something that, comment specifically on it this time, but I, I, all his concerns will be taken greatly into account, so.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Hearing nothing, we'll continue to move forward. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes items six A, items eight A through F, items nine A through C, items twelve A through C, and tonight's bills totaling two million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-four cents?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second? Second. We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Harvey. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. We're gonna continue on down. We have two public hearings tonight. The first public hearing concerns an amendment to the city code Title X, Chapter Twenty-seven, Section Eight, Regulations on Parking Lots, Garages, Drive Lanes, and Driveways. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Second, we have a motion by Councilman Saseo with a second by Councilman Brackett. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. We're going to do our second public hearing, which concerns declaring property located at four oh five Van Horn Street as surplus property and offering this property to sale, to, to sell to adjoining property owners Sergio and Gloria Zamora Jr. in the amount of three thousand dollars. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Saseo with a second by Councilman Brackett. All in favor say aye.
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 The motion carries. We'll continue down to eleven A, and we have presented for city councils' consideration the second reading of an ordinance on the proposed amendment to Title X, Chapter Seven, Building Regulations Mechanical Code. The Iowa Department of Public Health has adopted new codes, and to stay in compliance with state law, the city must adopt the new standards. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Saseo. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Fitzgerald, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
The motion carries with all ayes. We're on eleven B, and we have presented for city councils' consideration the second reading of an ordinance on the proposed amendment to Title X, Chapter Four, Section Eleven of City Code Flood Plane Regulations. The Iowa Department of Natural Resources has suggested that the city of Muscatine add six definitions to the city's flood plane management regulations. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Your Honor.
We have a motion by Councilman Harvey with a second by Councilwoman Brockert. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Malcolm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
And Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
The motion carries with all ayes. We're on eleven C. Presented for city councils' consideration is the first reading of an ordinance amending Title X, Chapter Twenty-seven, Section Eight of the City Code, Standards for All Parking Lots, Garages, Drive Lanes, Driveways. Public Hearing A. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second, we have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Saseo. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Harvey, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Nay.
And Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
The motion carries with three ayes and two nays.
Your Honor, I believe the motion failed.
It needs a.
This needed, uh.
This one, did this need a supermajority?
Su- this needed six.
Okay.
Yes.
So the motion failed. We're on eleven D. Presented for city councils' consideration is a resolution declaring property located at four oh five Van Horn as surplus and authorizing the sale of said property to the adjoining property owners Gloria and Sergio Zamora for the amount of three thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second, we have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Harvey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Malcolm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
And Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
This resolution is adopted with all ayes. We're on eleven E. Presented for city councils' consideration is a resolution awarding the contract for the Second Street and Mulberry Avenue Roundabout to her higher construction. Higher Construction's bid was two million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and it was the only bid received. Estimated cost for the project was one million, eight hundred and fifty thousand to one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand. Muscatine Power and Waters portion of this contract is two hundred and forty thousand dollars, leaving the city's share one million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The city will be looking at opportunities to decrease the project cost. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Your Honor.
We have a motion by Councilman Fitzgerald with a second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I've got questions. What, uh, on this, I, it seems unusual that we'd have only gotten one bid. Is that, I would be curious as to any thoughts on why that was the case. And then, I also have concerns about when we start this and timing of it, and the impact that it has on downtown businesses.
Mayor, council, so the first question is, why just one bid?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I don't know that anybody can really ever answer that question, for sure, but obviously, it isn't, um, a usual time to, to, to bid work in the middle of summer like that. We got forced into that schedule because of some extremely substantial delays in property acquisition, um, but because we don't wish to delay it any further, because it's just gonna be like dominos falling, um, into the Park Avenue project and into the Second Street sidewalk project, it, um, we don't wanna do those all together. Um, we decided that we would go ahead and, and proceed, and we only got one bid. I had KNE flatwork, took out a set of plans, um, all on their own, decided they had too much work to do as it was, and we agree with that, but there were other contractors that could have been on it and did not. I suspect that, uh, um, uh, the way that contract is, is structured with the seventy working days in it to, to try to accelerate it and get it done, at least the pavement portion of it by the time the snow flies, is a bit of a risk, and I think we're, we're seeing the effect of that. The only.
If I could interrupt real quick?
Sure.
The other important factor was the, the winter work and wanted to get that done?
Yes.
Before the flooding season?
Yes. Uh, the only, I, I was just gonna say, the, the only portion of that that I think is absolutely critical because of schedule is this underground work, because if we have a spring like we just had, we won't be finishing that project for, forever. I know, that sounds like gloom and doom, but we, it will take us a while to finish it. But no real solid reasons why. We only got one.
Okay.
I do know that if we'd gotten two other bids, and they were both higher than, than, uh, higher constructions, they were both more money, at a ten percent differential off of the engineer's estimate, I would still be standing here recommending a ward, and that, that's kinda the logic that led me to this.
Sure.
Um, the other part of your question was what? Remind me.
The other part of my question was, I've, I've had some of the downtown businesses reach out to me with a lot of concern about the timing of the, basically coming off of the loss of business they've had recently, um, due to different projects and flooding that was just something we couldn't avoid. But with the sidewalk project and this roundabout project, I, there's concerns, I think, about having them back-to-back, because then the whole thing will get drawn out as far as lack of, you know, I just wanna make sure that we are very clearly communicating with all the downtown businesses about this, 'cause it will severely impact them, and I don't wanna see more disappear.
Um, I couldn't agree more that we don't wanna see that happen. Um, if we award tonight, uh, we are gonna have a, we've already got a scheduled, uh, public information meeting with, uh, people downtown that are closest to where this roundabout is to start that process in earnest. Um, I am a big fan of regardless of what this roundabout takes, that we, we shouldn't do it and the, the Second Street downtown work together. I think that would be way too much of a burden to bear, and you have to play that off against the pluses and minuses of it, of it continuing on for a longer period of time with less impact, or do you have a big impact for a short period of time or one project. And I think those discussions are still going on, is, is to try to figure that out, but, I mean, we, we are, uh, right on top of that. I mean, we really don't wanna see that impact be too much for them. And so, there are public, especially for Second Street coming up, I mean, there's gonna be some public input meetings for that coming up pretty soon. We just saw kinda fifty percent complete plans on that today, so we're getting down to the nitty-gritty of that planning process, too.
Okay, and, and what about the most, most impacted one, which is that tire shop on the corner? We had further discussion with him to find a way to.
Quite a bit, yes.
Keep him open while he, while this goes on?
We, we will do everything that we can, everything that we can. We have promised him truck access, and we will never, ever shut his access off.
Okay.
And all of the things, including some signed, special signage for sidewalk, walking detours, for people that from H and I Corp. that wanna have their vehicles worked over there. We have promised him some of that stuff. His list of wants is pretty long, and I don't have the authority to promise him what he wants. So I don't know where that's gonna go, but I, I, I don't know if there's anything that we can do on that. Yeah. If he has, certainly I would, certainly I would think that if he has a complaint, we would, we, we would like to hear it during construction, but some of his complaints I anticipate, not anticipate, that I've read, you know, that he wants, are like, I, we don't even know that's gonna be a problem. How can we address it now?
Okay.
You know?
Councilman Saseo?
So, in your contract that you requested, it was seventy days from the days.
Seventy working days.
Seventy working days to actually do the work. Okay, so we're hypothetically looking, and that's not including weekends, obviously, or?
No, no, no. Yeah, and it, it, it will, I mean, the hope, we all know how our hopes have gone so far on projects, but the hope is that we get the pavement down and finish it in the spring. And if all we're doing is finishing bits and pieces and parts and stuff in the spring, then shortly thereafter, maybe we could get to letting Second Street. But that all depends.
So, if, if we're doing it in potential seventy days that could take us into the spring, do we potentially have a discussion with higher in regards to saying we will do one side of the roundabout in the first, let's say, forty-five days, for example? That way we can still allow traffic to get through the, to the downtown businesses?
Yeah.
Are we anticipating in stages, or are we doing it all and hey, nobody gets through here?
No, 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 there is, there's a staging plan that's very similar to that in those documents. But, you know, if you award tonight, we can start those discussions in earnest, have a pre-con, and really get down to the nitty-gritty of it. But there is that nasty little bit about negotiating with contractors before they award, and so we really haven't had that discussion.
I, and I, and I can see both sides, where they wanna have as much of the work to be able to do, and then at the same time, we wanna still keep the businesses operational and, and, and whatnot. So I think I would just have those thoughts kind of in, in foresight of saying, okay, we have good weather, maybe we just take it down for a week versus taking it down for two months. And, you know, I guess I, I would, you know, rely on your, your expertise on that, but I think that's my, my input in regards to saying if we can do it in stages, if they do half of the roundabout now, and then we do the other half in the spring, that way we can still allow traffic, so we're not having to probably congest the, I think, Oak Avenue and then going back all the way around.
Internally, we've had those discussions already, as to where we wanna be and where, where the points are to draw the line, in case it doesn't quite go the way you want it to, so. We are planning that.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Uh, yes, I see where the city will be looking at opportunities to decrease the project cost. Where would you anticipate finding cost savings in a project like this?
It looked like you were gonna do the, your own.
Discussions that really would have to, uh, interact with the, with the contractor.
Okay.
You really can't have those until after the contract is awarded. Um, and that's where we get into those details.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I would, if you're notifying people with residents within a hundred feet or a thousand feet or something, can we also include all the businesses and, and owners along the, the business corridor over to Pine Street, for instance?
Over to what? Over to Pine Street, is that what you said? Yeah.
So that, so we're, we're meeting for this group, but the others have a email that says, hey, this, this is, this is a meeting.
We'll do that, because I think there'll be some confusion as to what the Second Street reconstruction would be versus this. So, I, I, it's a good idea. We weren't planning on doing that, we can do that. Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Before we go on to the vote, Jeremy, I got a message that we're, this isn't going on YouTube.
I mentioned it.
You, did you already tell him? Got it? Thank you. And secondly, I, I've had several messages this week that the folks at home are having a hard time hearing council. So before you speak, if you would please, uh, pull the microphone to you and speak into it. I'm not looking at anybody in particular.
Sure.
So, Councilman Malcolm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
And Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. We're on eleven F. Presented for city councils' consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing concerning the declaration and sale of city-owned property on Row B Avenue. City staff negotiated a purchase price of eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars with Clint and Dana Church for an approximately one acre portion of the city-owned property that is attached to their property located on Division Street. This hearing will be held September fifth of twenty nineteen at seven here in this room. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted? Resolution, a resolution authorizing the assessment of unpaid abatement costs to private properties. The nuisance abatement costs total one thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty cents. The administrative fees are three hundred dollars, and the assessment fees are six hundred dollars. The total fees being requested for assessment at this time totals two thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty cents. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second, we have a motion by Councilman Fitzgerald with a second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Saseo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. We're on eleven I. Presented for city councils' consideration is a resolution approving the completed work for the Hauser Street Parking and Athletic Field Grading Project. At this time, Needham Excavating has satisfied the requirements of the contract. Staff recommends accepting completed work and authorizing final payment in the amount of sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. In thirty days, the retainage of thirty thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and ninety-five cents will be released. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second, Your Honor.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilwoman Brockert. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Harvey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
And Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Eleven J. Presented for city councils' consideration is a resolution to rescind Resolution twenty nineteen dash zero two one three, awarding project and rejecting all bids for the twenty nineteen Asphalt Alley Program. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Uh, Councilman Fitzgerald with a second by Councilman Harvey?
Yes.
Is there any discussion?
I would just ask when this would be rebid, and what, or what our plans are there?
We're still talking. We, we, um, we're talking, talking about, uh, asphalt paving and, and getting that turned around, or, um, seeing how some of the projects come in, and if the funding could be better used in, in, in those, uh, for those projects. I think Brian's leaning towards, uh, bringing back and returning, or re- rebidding the project as soon as possible.
Okay.
So, so, I mean, so, am I hearing right? So that means that we reject everything, everything's off the table, so everybody that wants to do this gets the opportunity to rebid again?
Correct.
Alright.
Okay, go ahead. Yes, please. I had a quick question before, uh, but I'll wait till after. I was just going to ask, um, how the decision is made whether or not to revert back to the lowest bidder as opposed to put it for rebid? How's that decision made? What are the parameters guiding that decision, and who makes it?
Going back to the.
So, so the, the issue that we had.
Right.
With, was that the low bidder didn't get it for whatever reason. And so, now you have the discussion or the decision to make moving forward. Do we just, uh, give it to ProPaving as the lowest bidder if they meet the parameters of, of the requests that were made of them? Or do we put it out and ask for, uh, cancel all bids and start again? How is that decision made, and who makes it?
That would be council's decision. I, I believe our recommendation would be to rebid it, um, as a, rebid the package. Uh, city staff did not feel that the, uh, low bidder, uh, was the responsible bidder or met the bid specs.
So the, the, tonight's decision is just to cancel everything?
Reject all bids.
Reject all bids, and then we will have another decision coming forth about what we're going to do in the future?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm Nancy McClure, owner of ProPaving. And I, I have to say that I don't have my law degree, but I, I guess I'm confused on how you can put a bid out there. We did get it, we did meet it, we gave you some very valid points on our confusion on why, what happened here, and now, and this is why we're in attendance tonight, I, I failed to understand how you can do this. I, 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 I don't. And so, I would like the council to enlighten me on this.
I do have a law degree, and I'd just like to let you know, Iowa Code, Chapter 26, allows the council to accept the lowest responsible bid or reject the bid. They're not required by law to take the low bid. So, you have absolute authority. Uh, well, one, the staff's telling you, they don't think the bid is a responsible bid. That's a factual issue. But putting aside, if it was the lowest responsive responsible bid, you have always the opportunity to decide as a council, we don't want to do this for whatever reason, for a fiscal reason, for a public policy reason. So you have absolute authority to accept a low bid that the engineering says is responsive and responsible, or to reject and not even go out for bids later. You could just decide, we're not ever going to do this project. So, whatever you decide tonight, going ahead or rejecting, you have complete legal authority to do so.
Does that answer your question?
Well, there's one, one question I would ask, I'd like to ask. Can I, first of all, I'd like to know your name. And secondly, um, what, what is your definition of responsible?
So this is our city attorney, Matthew Brick, and go ahead.
Iowa Code, Chapter 26, governs all public bidding, and under that section, they talk about what responsive and responsible are. That's something that the Iowa courts over decades have expanded on. But essentially, a responsive bid, it's a fact determination for the judge every single time a lawsuit comes up.
So, and judge can determine this? Not a councilman, or not a public works director, is what you're telling me? A judge could determine that?
If I could finish. A judge, over the course of many years, many judges have said what responsive and responsible bids are. And what they say is that if a bid, for whatever reason, doesn't meet, like if there are fifteen items that you are required to respond to, and one of your responses is not acceptable to the city, it can be disqualified as a non-responsive bid. If your bond that you are required to submit doesn't meet the specifications, it can be a non-responsive bid. So there are a variety of different reasons. It's, but it's not up to a judge, it's up to all of you. The purpose of the law is to protect taxpayer funds, not to protect people who are bidding on the project. So the judge isn't going to say, you had no authority to reject the bids.
It's my understanding that each council is allowed to determine what they consider responsive.
Well, they can determine to accept a bid-
Right.
But if a bid, for example, isn't responsive, if they don't answer one entire page, you wouldn't be able to accept that bid, because it's not fair to the other people if they bid and they did fill out those pages.
So, may I-
Go ahead.
You know, my confusion here is, what was presented for us was another company, which we rejected the contract for them. This company was presented and explained the situation, but the choice for us was not submitted, if we wanted to use them or not. You know, they just said, well, we'll take it under advisement and seek guidance from you. And so now, we're sitting here, being told that all bids are off the table. You didn't ask us, would we like to reconsider giving her, her company, even though that lower was bid, even though county, uh, city doesn't recommend it, uh, maybe council might want to use their company. I mean, I, they seem reasonable in their explanation, and explaining that they had a lot of turbulence to try to comply with what was being requested of them. I don't know if they fully complied with all of the things, but all the details that I sat here and heard, they answered adequately, even bringing in outside professionals. So my question again is, do we, if we cancel this all, or do we cancel everything, can we still just award it to her company if we wanted to, or not?
Well, staff has made the determination, Greg.
That's nice, we got that. Staff has already said what they want, but-
No, 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 I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Oz. If a factual determination has been found that the bid isn't responsive or responsible, and that's typically an engineer determination-
Okay.
Then the bid doesn't even come to you guys, because you, you don't have the authority to approve a bid that's not the lowest responsive and responsible. That's the issue. If a bid is disqualified for either of those two things, and it's an, an engineering fact, then you, if you approve it, one of the other bidders could challenge it in court and have the approval thrown out. That's why you always have to make sure we have the people who review the project for us, tell us, yes, this is a complete bid, yes, it's a responsive.
But that's my concern, that they brought in experts, clear, to clarify the facts. So my, in my mind, it was clear, I'm not sure if anybody else had any ambiguity with it, but I heard them clearly, I heard the outside consultants, and their contractors, and everybody who are well-established. So I'm still trying to figure out, why aren't they factual? And if they, you're still the lowest, and they want it, why can't we consider them?
I thought the engineering question was the question on milling, and the city staff and the engineers were happy with their answer with that, because they clearly said that in the letter, if you will do this, then we consider that to be responsive. But the reason that they rejected them at the end was they had some questions on their reference. So it wasn't an engineering thing, saying they weren't responsive, but it was a question on their reference.
And I'll defer to staff on that.
So, not only, not only references, but they did not include the fact that they were going to use that outside third party in their bid?
But they were requested.
There was no, there was no indication. We just, um, was awarded the Burlington, Iowa Street Project. We are using a subcontractor, WK Construction, out of Wisconsin, to do the stabilization and immol, I can never pronounce that, immolization. And the, as long as we produce the federal EIN and so forth to the city, we could bring in twenty subcontractors. I don't think that's an issue here. And not once did you folks say, okay, are you using a subcontractor? If so, we need their EIN, we need your contract, we need their lien waiver at the end. There was nothing in that, nothing. And, and I guess I have one question to you, and I understand, I'm, I'm pretty smart, but, um, I understand that you have that option, that's that fine print on reasonable, but you keep referring to someone in the city made that determination that it was not reasonable. One person, and I don't know who, and on what basis. So I, I guess I'm asking for clarity.
Well, city staff generally relies on-
Who is city staff?
Ma'am, you've asked it-
Who is city staff? That's a real simple question.
Ma'am, it, our city staff would be our public works department as a team.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
I think you've answered it.
Go ahead.
I had a couple of comments. So, while I don't necessarily disagree with Oz on some of the comments that he made, my reason for supporting the rebid process is because I, I respect what our city, our city staff did bring forward, but I saw enough confusion in the process, in the information that was provided to me before the last, right before the last meeting, that I feel that the most fair option is a rebid. That is why I support that. Now, had I not had that information right before that meeting, I would have just supported the bid that we had in front of us, because of what the information I had. Now, I did see, you know, some back and forth about requests for, you, you know, the, the information you were talking about, where you were asked to provide the subcontractor and the information about that, as far as the milling, and, and that. And I don't understand, from my perspective, really, why the bid didn't go your direction based on some of that that I saw. But I also saw, you know, the confusion about the references. So I just want to be clear why I'm where I am at with this. But, you know, I, I think the most fair option for all is, is the rebid process. I, I wouldn't, even if it was an option in front of us, I, I wouldn't support automatically just going to the low bid, given the situation that occurred. But I definitely want to give the right opportunity to those, you know, the, the contractors involved. And the only way that I see that clarity, because, as I said, I respect the opinions and expertise of our city staff, and I understand the, the confusion that came forward to me right before the last meeting. So I, 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 that's why I support the rebid process.
I, again, you know, I'm still, I, for an example, you, and, and you have said several times tonight, our references. This is a he said, she said. Two out of the three gave us favorable references. The third, and I think I explained it, I'll be more than happy to go through it tonight again, Larry Dinwiddie was the acting city engineer and the, or city public works director in Fort Madison. He was also the acting city manager. Larry Dinwiddie has since retired. Larry Driscoll has in that position today. He has been in that position for seven years. When either Randy or Brian called, his response, and he told me, because we were just awarded Fort Madison City Street Seal Co. project, and I was at their city council meeting, and, um, Larry Driscoll said, I don't know ProPaving. He didn't. He failed to get up out of his office chair and say, let's pull the file on this. My question to him and to Randy, and I think I even mentioned it in emails, was, we did, that was our very first paving city street project in 2012, and it was a huge one. They've had no maintenance on that. In the seven years that Larry Driscoll has been in that position, it has been seal-coated one time. So, again, my confusion is, where did our references lack?
Ma'am, I, I think one thing for us to learn from this, and it's probably a good point for everyone to realize, is if you list someone as a reference, you need to touch base with them ahead of time, and make sure that they know that you've used them for a reference, and you, and have a conversation with them. It, it really wouldn't be up to our staff to try to find more references. It would be up to you to present them to them. And so that's, that together with the, the milling questions, is what led them to move forward and take the second, the second lowest bid. Counsel at, at least understood the, the problems, the issues, as Councilman Brackett said, and is willing, and has decided so far, to cancel all bids and at least give everybody another opportunity to come back to the table. And that's what the vote is tonight. The vote tonight is to cancel all the bids up to this point. And then we will move forward down the road with what our next process is going to be. And you are more than welcome to be in on that as well.
And I appreciate, and I respectfully, and I am trying to be as respectful and understanding as I can. I, like I said, I think I'm of average intelligence on this, and as far as in the construction field, I get it. But what I don't get is, I, I do think this was a poor business deal on your side, and I don't think we have a milling issue, and I don't think that we have a reference issue. So I still will walk out the door, saying that something in this room didn't smell right prior to us getting that bid. And that's my argument today, two weeks ago, and it will be in the future. Tri-City Blacktop came into this room and said, what's going to stop Taylor, and I don't have nothing against Taylor Ridge, because they didn't do anything wrong. They're out for the dollar, just like we are. But what's going to stop them from coming in a dollar cheaper? We did everything that we were supposed to do.
You guys will have to figure that out on your bids.
I know, right?
We appreciate your position and the time that you've taken working through this.
I just think it's very unethical, that what happened.
This is, this is not uncommon. We've done this before, just to give you-
This is my first encounter of this.
Well, just to let you know, we have, we've had unresponsive bids before, where somebody penny bid items, and the council was concerned about it. We ended up tabling it and completely throwing all the bids out, and that was for probably fifteen times the amount that yours, your amount was. So it was for, I think, ten million dollars. But my point to you is that it is the best way for us, as a council, to completely wipe the, the slate clean, because if Taylor Ridge comes back and says, hey, why did you give it to them, when they were potentially unresponsive? Hey, why did we give it to you, when Taylor Ridge was originally awarded it? It's our, our basically best defense for the tax dollars, to not potentially look at ourselves six months down the road in another lawsuit. So it is table, completely wipe them out, restart it, and be clear, obviously, as what the mayor's comments are, and who we use for references, who we use for, you know, timing. Ideally, for example, like we just saw, seventy days was the response for what we needed for another project. If those items are not met completely on those quotes and those, those contracts, then we can't, we don't even see it.
And I understand. And like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm very respectful, and I'm very respectful that you are listening. You know, I, hopefully, that you can come into this with an open mind, and it's, it's business, folks, it's, it's totally business. Again, you know, how, how often have we said, and I have one final thing, and that's this, how often have we said, when we have left a situation, golly, I wish I would have said that? Two weeks ago, when I was here, and I think it was to you, Greg, something about our milling. I stand here today, just like I did when we bid this, that we are capable of doing the milling with the 2012 Roadhog, that the city of Muscatine has. The only difference is, I truly believe that maybe it's your operator that failed to give you the milling that you wanted, because I'm confident that our operator can do the work. I, we're working out at Donaldson. We got the city of Burlington's bid, we got the city of Fort Madison's.
Again, we, we appreciate your time. We will-
Thank you.
Again, look at times when we can rebid it, and I, again, I hope that you do rebid it. We're not encouraging you to not rebid, but, again, the same contractor that was taken off, that did win the lowest bid, ultimately went back in and won the complete bid for us, and we have still used them for multiple years now. So it doesn't mean that it's the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do appreciate your time.
Yep.
Hearing nothing else, Councilman Malcolm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
And Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. We're on 11K. We have presented for City Council's consideration a resolution awarding the contract for the Muscatine Municipal Airport Hangar and Apron Construction Projects to SG Construction in the amount of six hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. Three bids were received, and SG Construction was the low bid. Bids were requested for three new hangars, and included an alternate for two additional hangars. Due to the bid amounts, it is proposed that the award be, that the contract be awarded for the three hangars to stay within the four hundred thousand dollars in bonding previously authorized by city council. The city was awarded two grants from the Iowa Department of Transportation for this project, with the remaining amount being paid for from the bond proceeds. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett, with a second by Councilwoman Brockert. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Harvey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. We're on 11L. We have now presented for City Council's consideration a request for the issuance of a purchase order to Bushman Excavating in the amount of seventy-five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for pavement crushing. Two bids were received, with the bid from Bushman Excavating being the low bid. There's seventy-five thousand dollars budgeted for this expense. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett, with a second by Councilman Harvey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We have now presented for City Council's consideration a request to approve a transit joint participation agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation to implement a Federal Transit Administration Non-Urban Operating Assistance Project. Is there a- motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Saseo with a second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We're on eleven N. We have presented for city council's consideration a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Martin and Whitaker in the amount of fifty-nine hundred dollars for a survey and preliminary engineering study for a demountable flood wall along the riverfront. There will be for, this will be for a future project to be cost shared between the city, Canadian Pacific, and potentially HNI and Heinz. This fifty-nine hundred would be broken down three ways. One-third by HNI, one-third by Canadian Pacific, one-third by us, out of an, out of our engineering budget. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilwoman Harvey. Is there any discussion?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
In the supporting materials, there was a photograph of what appears to be a temporary flood wall is, but there was no reference to the photograph. I just, is, was that just to give an example of what we may be talking about?
It looked pretty neat, didn't it?
Yes.
No, no, I got, I got it. Uh, uh, Mayor, Council, that picture is actually one that I looked for, because it's in, oh, God, Evansville, Evansville?
Indiana?
Indiana, right on the Ohio River. And it was a demountable flood wall that I was a construction project manager on. One of the things that I did well is at Stanley's. So when I thought of it, that's immediately where I went to look to find a picture. So that's a good example of exactly what I have stuck in my brain, that this thing is gonna look like. Um, does that answer your question?
Yep. It's also similar to the one at the baseball field up in Davenport.
Yeah, the, modern Woodman has almost the exact same thing that goes around their field in Davenport, and I think they also have the same thing on the enclosures or the openings that protect their water treatment plan. I got a quick question from here that I would like to answer, just for maybe the rest of the people that might not know, but demountable is a fancy word for take-up-able and put-down-able, or put-up-able and take-down-able.
Temporary.
Removable. No. I would not call it temporary.
You wouldn't.
It is nothing similar at all to a HESCO barrier or-
But they go up and down, right?
You can put them up, and then you can take them down.
Take them down.
And when they're gone, they're gone. The only visibility you have is maybe something that looks like a concrete sidewalk with a steel or a burnished aluminum plate that's
Because the pieces stay there, right?
The, the base for the columns are embedded at the surface of that concrete.
At the bottom of the concrete.
Yeah. So that, that all stays. Anything else?
But the, using a barrier on Mississippi Drive would be at an additional expense, which we haven't had, and it wouldn't keep seep water from coming into the basements, because you're dealing with surface water only.
Um, it would keep, it would keep the floodwaters farther much, ever so much, much farther away from those businesses.
But would they wouldn't get them in, the water in their basements, then?
Can I, can I guarantee you that? No, I can't guarantee that. But it would, it would keep that water down, let's just say where the trail is.
Okay.
Okay, and, and the railroad tracks would still be open. So I would find it very hard to believe that that water would migrate that far and get into those basements. I really, I really do. But the art of the dodge of this is not, not the wall. The, the wall is very simple in concept, and it, and it is, is a wonderful thing. You can actually buy it with little transparent panels that go in, so you can look and see the river go by if you want. I know, that seems funny. Um, but the art of the dodge is, I believe there's five places that pipe would go underneath this wall. So when you build this structure, most of your expense goes in the ground. You've got piling in the ground, you've got structures built in there where you can close off your sewer system and your storm sewers, anything that would cross underneath that wall. And then you would be able to have the ability of something we don't have now, which you'd be able to place a pump, drop the, into that pump into that water, and pump it over that wall and out into the river. So what we have now is when we're in the closure process and we get a big rainstorm, it all comes down there with no place to go. And so that's why we get some of the flooding that we get on Sycamore and Mississippi Drive. And it would improve that situation greatly. There's a lot of detail that goes along with this. This is just a feasibility study.
This is just the survey part, right?
Just to, just so we can start to wrap our hands around what a cost estimate might be, so that we can start to pull these people in for, to see whether they really wanna participate or not. And I, it is a tremendously good idea, I think.
Councilman Brackett?
No, he answered all my questions before he stopped talking.
Did you get it? You got it. Thank you.
I'll stop talking quicker.
All right. Hearing nothing else, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We're on eleven O. We have presented for city council's consideration a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to hydroengineering in the amount of ten thousand five hundred and thirty dollars for the purchase of two six hundred and sixty-foot sections of snap-tight polyurethane dragline hose. There's fifteen thousand dollars budgeted for this purchase. Do I have a motion to approve the request as submitted? Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Fitzgerald with a second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We're on eleven P. We have presented for city council's consideration a request to approve addendum number one for the nutrient reduction study. Bolton and Mank have recommended additional work to the study. A soil investigation and wetland delineation have been proposed for seven thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars from the subcontractor Impact Seven G. This will be paid for from the plant operating funds. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Second, Your Honor.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilwoman Brockert. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We're on eleven Q. We have presented for city council's consideration a request to approve and sign a contract with access to care to provide transportation to passengers with a waiver through the new managed care organization, Iowa Total Care. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second, Your Honor.
We have a motion by Councilman Harvey with a second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion? I have a question. So this is really good news, that finally Iowa Total Care got it figured out so that they could do, um, the contract. But this, will this also cover having the monthly bus pass, or will, will this just cover the individual rides to go to doctor appointments and things like that?
Mayor, Council, thank you for your question. I have no idea, but I will find out, and I will let you know tomorrow.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Hearing nothing else, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We're on eleven R. We have presented for city council's consideration a request to enter into an agreement with Windsor Consulting for IT staff augmentation services. Nine proposals were received and reviewed by the review committee, which included the IT manager, John Cruzenstein, who's making an entrance for us now, even as we speak, city administrator, finance director, and councilmember Brackett in spread. Two firms were requested to provide further information, and they gave presentations to the committee. The committee is recommending entering into the agreement with Windsor Consulting to provide these services in the upcoming year. The agreement provides for services on an hourly basis, and there is twenty-five thousand dollars approved in the budget for this expense. Do I have a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Fitzgerald with a second by Councilman Malcolm. Is there any discussion?
I have one quick question.
Go ahead.
Is, the money we're talking about, is that for reactive services or proactive services, or both?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, the, the idea with this is, is to attempt to be proactive. This is a staff augmentation, and there will be a number of different tasks that are involved with that. Mostly it is, it is to have additional sta-, additional level available for us for additional projects that, that do come up. Many of those will be proactive. We're gonna have a, a, an initial assessment done. A lot of the work that's completed will be part of that initial assessment. So this is a open project, and, and it will be more, I would say, in a, in a, I guess, to use your terminology, I guess we'll, we'll call it mostly proactive.
Okay, so, does the company just provide, I'll use the word, the manpower, or do they also provide software and hardware?
Uh, I would not anticipate purchasing products from this company. They're, they're a consulting organization.
Thank you.
John, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
So is this a, a two-year or a three-year contract that we're going in with them?
It is a year-to-year contract.
Okay. So hypothetically, if, if it turns out that we use their services extremely highly in the first couple of months, we could go over twenty-five thousand?
I, I, there's, there's definitely a possibility that could happen, yes. Um, we put a dollar figure of twenty-five thousand in the budget. Uh, this, we're, we're new to this arena. This is not something we've done in the past. Uh, that was a, I will just call it an educated guess what I thought this might possibly be. Uh, we kind of estimated about how many hours we think it'll be. Um, hopefully we can, don't exceed that twenty-five thousand dollar figure by a large margin.
However, if I could add to that, that initial assessment that they'll be doing will give us a better idea of what we need to do and when we need to do it. And then if there are things that need to happen sooner rather than later, we will certainly bring that back to council for consideration.
And you said this is something that we, we did approve on the budget?
Yes. There is funding approved in the budget, yes.
I just, I didn't understand when they say augmentation services, it's just-
We have two full-time IT staff personnel. John is the IT manager, so this is a consulting service to augment our staff, because they bring to the table, obviously, uh, multiple employees rather than us hiring simply one additional staff person.
So it's almost like a contractor, in a sense, helping you maybe once a week or twice a week, a couple hours over the phone or here personally?
Yes.
Okay, I understand. I'm good with it.
Okay, I was just gonna say, I, I don't have any questions, obviously, because I was in the committee that, that assisted in determining which, which group to go with. But it, really what they do in addition to just providing additional hands is the fact that they have different experts in different areas that, you know, are difficult to maintain expert knowledge on unless you're working on it all the time. There's a lot of things in IT that you might not touch for two years, as far as, you know, a protocol or a, a process or thing, something like that, and it's hard to keep up with that in knowledge. So having a company like this come in and be able to have those different experts in different areas, when we say, "Oh, we need to do this project, so send us that person," it's, it's more than just the hands, you know, the hands to help. It's the, the, you know, the intelligence and background to be able to provide that expertise. So we don't have to train people to do things that they don't have to do very often.
Councilman Harvey?
Yeah, well, some of this work be onsite and offsite, perchance?
Definitely. Yes, it will be. Uh, one of the advantages that's with this company is they are not far away. Uh, but, uh, there are a lot of, a large portion of the, of the work will still be done remotely. Heck, I'm still in the same town, and I still do a large amount of work remotely.
Thank you, John, and thanks to the whole team for putting this all together.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Hearing nothing else, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We're on eleven S. We have presented for city council's consideration a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Helitech, or Helotech, Helitech, isn't it? Helitech in the amount of fifteen thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars for the repair of multiple building foundations at Sunset Park Housing. Three quotes were, were received, and the lowest responsible bid, meaning all requirements, was from Helitech. There was ten thousand dollars in the eighteen-nineteen budget for these repairs, which we carried forward to fiscal year nineteen-twenty. There are funds available in the Public Housing Program Fund to pay the full amount of these repairs. Do I have a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Malcolm. Is there any discussion?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
In the reference material, it talks about a problem with one building. This proposal that the mayor just read says multiple buildings. Is it one or more?
I thought there were two. Maybe there's more than that.
Mayor, Council, Jodi Raghuram, Community Development Director, it actually is one building.
One building.
One building. Um, there are other buildings with issues, but right now we're, this is the significant issue that the bill, the unit is unable to be occupied.
So this is only gonna fix the one?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead. Um, do we know what has caused the foundations to become so that the building is uninhabitable?
The primary cause indicated by the engineering report is soil movement due, soil settling due to water movement through the soil. So like, um, the tree roots have, you know, created holes and stuff, and then it's sandy down there, so the water has moved through, and it has settled out more in some areas than others.
So the water, the water table has had something to do with this, as well as other factors?
I don't know about the water table so much. Like this year, it didn't happen this year. It's been progressing over time. The, um, so our gutter system is another thing we're looking at, and it's one of the things in this scope of work for that building is to have, um, the water moved away from the edge of the building, so it's running, it's coming down, and it's just coming out right there, and then it's settle, you know, moving through the dirt to do whatever water does in the dirt. Um, but then, so we'll have si- at least six-foot leads to move the water away from the building to avoid that inner, that issue.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Hearing nothing else, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We're on eleven T. We have presented for city council's consideration a request to authorize the nineteen-twenty city deer hunt to be held from September fourteenth of twenty-nineteen to January ten of twenty-twenty. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Second, Your Honor.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Fitzgerald. Is there any discussion?
I would just make a comment that we keep an eye on the turkey population, and if that gets too excessive, we add them to that in the future.
Hearing nothing else, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We're on eleven U. Presented for city council's consideration as a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to FSS Incorporated in an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and forty-seven cents for the upgrade and expansion of camera systems at the Water Resource and Recovery Facility and Transfer Stations. This project was not bid out due to the fact that FSS Incorporated is the only company capable of taking the current system and tying it in with the new equipment. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Fitzgerald with a second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion?
Quick question.
Go ahead.
Uh, according to the supporting documents, I take it that some of these cameras, if not all of them, have night vision. IR, infrared.
Mayor, Council, no, I don't recall that, but-
I saw IR several times.
Possible. Most of these cameras do all kinds of things that the old cameras don't, haven't been able to do, so.
Well, if you don't have light poles or visible spotlights or something, they're not gonna see anything unless they do have the IR.
Yeah, and they're, they're, everywhere that they are pointing outside, there's gonna be lights, and there'll be lights wherever the cameras are needed. So we, I did not request specifically night vision cameras, but-
Okay, you might just ask them.
Oh, I haven't dug into, the spec was about that big. I haven't read everything about all the cameras, but they, they might.
It'd be kinda neat if they did.
Would be cool.
Actually, some of the things, they are cameras that have those capabilities. You just have to look at the software. We have cameras that I know of that can actually detect a fire from a certain place, send a signal back, alarm, let an operator know that you have something. I mean, if you're looking at those types of cameras, there's capabilities in that software that they can do that can send a signal back.
Sure.
And let you know. Uh, it would be a good discussion point to maybe see if that's something that those are capable of. Ideally, especially looking at some of the future that you're looking at, and as far as that facility becoming a potential productivity of gas and whatnot, so.
Good point.
In reading the material, and I hadn't thought about it before, but a lot of these companies that are sending- but a lot of these companies that are sending us food items that are still packaged, they wanna know that they're destroyed.
Correct. That's what the cameras are for.
That we're not reselling them to somebody, you know?
Or if somebody's coming, taking it home.
Right.
And that they will actually have the capability of dialing into this, these cameras themselves remotely. So they can, they can see the cameras anytime, twenty-four seven, they want to, to verify for themselves that this stuff is being actually destroyed. It's good.
Thank you. Hearing nothing else, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We're on eleven V. Presented for city council's consideration as a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Elliott Equipment in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand, nine hundred dollars for the purchase of solid waste dumpsters and trash carts. There's sixteen thousand, nine hundred dollars budgeted in the Solid Waste Refuge Collection Fund for the purchase of residential trash containers and commercial dumpsters. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Your Honor.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilwoman Brockert. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We're on eleven W. Presented for city council's consideration as a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Terrion Sons in the amount of seven thousand, three hundred dollars for the fire department patio ceiling. There's nine thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars in the deferred maintenance project budget for this expense. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Your Honor.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Malcolm. Is there any discussion?
So, what are they painting, are they painting wood or, or concrete cement?
Thought it was concrete.
Yes.
Concrete.
Excuse me?
Concrete.
The concrete. So, who's, uh, who's doing the actual inspection after as far as mills to make sure that we're getting so many coats on there? Okay.
Okay. So you don't have to answer the que, Jerry doesn't have to do it?
I, I guess all I'm getting at is I just wanna verify that, that when we, when we get this coded, that we have at least a verification that they do apply so many coats, either if it's our in-house inspections or a third party of some sort, um, that we do end up getting. If it's, if it's fifteen mills, I wanna make sure that we do get at least a spot check on maybe a half a dozen areas on that location that we're actually getting what we're requesting. That's all I have.
Thank you. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We're on eleven X. Presented for city council's consideration as a request to approve the attached list of city-owned surplus items and authorize the sale of said items via online auction between September second and September sixteenth. Proceeds will go to the individual departments that submitted the items to be sold. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Saseo. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
What happens after September sixteen? Do we just dump the equipment or...
Mayor, Council, Brian Steinman, Public Works Director. It depends on what the items are. Sometimes we'll just keep them and, and try them at a future auction. If it's something that we don't really have a, much value for or use for, we may just throw it in the trash or recycle it, whatever the case may be.
You wouldn't put it in the landfill, certainly.
It depends on what it is. But, yeah, if, if nobody wants it and, and we don't need it, it, it doesn't serve us any purpose to keep it. We may, like I said, we may keep it for one more time and see if anyone wants to put it on it. Otherwise, we get rid of it.
One, one question, Brian. What is the, what is the actual website's name for the public to be able to access this?
It is Public Surplus Auctions is this, I think it's publicsurplusauctions.com if I'm correct. And then if you go into that and click on, or type in City of Musketeen, it will take you to our auction site.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Hearing nothing else, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We're on eleven Y. Presented for city council's consideration as a request to enter into a contract with CETA Consulting for the evaluation process of the city administrator. CETA Consulting's proposal provides a thorough approach to ensuring the city administrator receives a meaningful, fair, and actionable evaluation. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Saseo. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The request is approved with six ayes, five ayes, and one nay. We're on eleven Z. We have a discussion regarding Title I, Chapter ten, Section one B.
I have a question on this before we start. I thought we had consensus last time to have this brought forward as a code change. There was a code change that was emailed to us, um, but that didn't seem to make it into the attachment tonight. Instead, we had a criticizing letter added into the attachment. But, I would move that, well, I guess, I don't know, I'm not making a motion. I, I, I have a question, though, why we didn't get what we had a consensus on last time?
The, the ordinance that, that was, was provided was in the confidential email. I brought copies of it tonight that could be passed around if it was appropriate to do so.
To your point, Councilmember Brackett, changing the code for the city would also require you to change the council rules, which would require a supermajority. And so, what we had given to you all was a change that wouldn't require change in the code of ethics. So, that was what we had proposed and that's what I've got here that I thought was in the packet, but it didn't get in.
Correct. And I find that, I find that change acceptable and would move that we do pro, push that forward. I have no, I have no issue with that. I, I find it adequate to what we requested and I was disappointed it wasn't actually on the agenda to have a first reading tonight, so...
Can I clarify that? The, the item here does not require a change to the ethics code?
This, the language that I proposed, you would not have to change the ethics code because this would still be in compliance with its subsection two. Because everything would, uh, the meetings and the, um, issues and concerns would ultimately have the city administrator notified.
Just in reverse?
Yeah.
Yeah, because the concerns that some people have expressed about abuse of, of communication, I think this provides for that protection to make sure that, you know, people don't take advantage of that option. And I, I agree, that is a potential issue. So, I do support this, this verbiage. I don't think there is any perfect verbiage that kid, that would come forward from this that would both provide what I really wanted and also the future protections or protections in general against abuse of that ability. So, I, I support the language that was presented to us and, once again, think that it should have been on the agenda for a first reading tonight. But, I would like to ask that it be put into the next agenda for a first reading, if that is the proper procedure and so that we can move forward on that.
We could certainly do that. And, and it's also, I, I think there was a misunderstanding that, I, I still understood that the council would have to act on the ethics rules before that they, the council could act on the city code.
If they wanted to do a change beyond this, but this change, and that was, again, we wanted to make sure if this was enough, then we didn't have to have the vote and then at the next meeting amend and do all that. So this would be something that you could then start the process at the next meeting and not have to wait the two full meetings.
Right. And as, as the person that initiated this originally in January, I, I'm, this meets the requirements that I had.
Okay.
And this only requires a simple majority?
This will just be a change to the ordinance, so, correct. The only time it wouldn't, it'd require more is if you're going to waive the second and the third readings. But if you're gonna do the three readings, it would just be the standard ordinance vote. Yes, you're right, Mayor.
And while I support this absolutely, I, I also support three readings, so I wouldn't wanna waive the three readings.
Are you trying to say that anytime we waive the readings?
We need to have a supermajority.
The three readings, that we have to have a supermajority?
Not supermajority.
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
Well, like, for example, you're missing someone tonight and so it would alter the vote, yeah.
I don't think we've had two-thirds before.
Two-thirds, not, so, for the council rules, it requires six-seventh of, or three-quarters?
No, I mean, we have waived the, um, having three and reduced it down to only two readings without having it be two-thirds.
And everyone votes in favor?
No, they don't.
No, it's, the last time that we had that happen, if, if I can, okay, so, we had, we had one where, at the meeting, and I don't recall which item it was that we were talking about, but there was one where I made a statement. I voted no. Councilman Harvey also voted no to skip, in, in regards to skipping that. At that meeting, I think it was said that it, it passed with a majority vote, but then it came back at the, no, I wasn't talking into the mic. It came back at the next meeting. Staff brought it back to us and said, no, it didn't actually pass. You need to proceed forward with it. And then since then, we haven't really been pushing for the skipping of those readings.
So we did approve it that night, but it was corrected later?
Correct.
Correct.
So in my, in my comments in regards to this, I, I reviewed this. Obviously, what we're doing to the public to be able to see this is we're, in my view, amending or, or changing the ordinance from the existing code and then adding to what are existing code, which is for the public to be able to understand is elected officials shall have access to department heads or staff, employees for the purpose of open and two-way communications. However, any meetings, issues, or concerns raised through department heads or staff to elected officials shall be brought to the attention of the city administrator. In my view, I'm perfectly good with this. Again, it still continues to keep in line with the fact that we are not here to try to give direction to any city staff. We're not looking to try to come up on a witch hunt, which I'm kind of disappointed in the email as well. In regards to this, this is in regards for us to be able to get communications, to get feedback, to look at things of how, uh, operations may be going, how equipment may be doing, how, you know, just normal day-to-day things that would be able to have, how are you doing? How are things operational? You know, we made comments of how are certain items that we purchased in the past. That is my intent to this and that is my review of this. And I think I would also second the motion if, if that's what Councilman Brackett is requesting to add to this ordinance, um, because we're just basically adding on. We're not changing the existing code, if you read from that. We're just adding on to what was already there. And that is what the city attorney has updated with us. And if we can move forward on that, I would second that motion.
Yes, and that was my intent, was to make a motion that this come forward at the next meeting as an addition to the code, as, as was provided to us and then would be provided to the public in that, in that agenda, so that we can have a first reading and move forward from there.
So, yeah, the public would then have notice of this and then you guys would start the process, correct?
Okay, thank you.
So we would still have a public hearing, correct? Is that what you're saying?
There'd be three readings.
Three readings of it, sorry.
Yeah, three readings. Okay.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I, I, I guess I have to speak in deference to the letter that's included in the package. I think city council, uh, excuse me, city staff has every right to respond to the comments and to the ordinance, uh, proposed ordinance changes as anyone does. And if they, um, wanted to include those comments in there, I think they're perfectly valid. They can, they, uh, can be shown to have been spoken at council meetings. In fact, in most cases, verbatim. I think their comments are all valid and council should weigh them as they would any other, uh, member of the public's, uh, opinion. In fact, I think it should give it even greater deference in relationship to this issue as they are the ones that are gonna have to be dealing with the consequences of this ordinance changes as am I. I think you should, uh, take their, uh, letter into strong consideration. And I, I appreciate them willing to step forward and put those comments out there. So, um, I, I don't appreciate the negative, uh, feedback that they've been given tonight.
I, I would like to clarify, I'm not giving this, the, the signatures on their negative feedback 'cause I don't think they wrote it. So, that's my statement on that. I, I, I don't appreciate that being brought forward to us with us not having the ability to have a discussion via email, 'cause we, we got, you know, we got some of these things via email as well. Now, we can't talk, we, so we weren't able to talk about this 'cause we have to have it in a public forum, which I support. But we had, we had, you know, this, the code change that I, I said was brought, you know, was sent to us via email. We, we didn't discuss it. I wasn't, you know, I, I didn't respond to anything there. So, I, I, I also feel that, you know, maybe staff, I don't know if, if the staff that signed that letter, if they know that code change was being proposed, but I think that, I mean, in my mind, anyway, that code change should alleviate the, a lot of the concerns that they had that were expressed in that letter. And that's where I'm disappointed, that maybe they weren't provided that information. So, I'm not, I'm not criticizing the staff that signed that letter, I'm really not. And I want them to understand that. But, I, I am disappointed that the communications maybe didn't make it around the way that they needed to for them to understand what was being presented to us. And there was no way that I can say, in that conversation via email, I can't say, oh, yeah, great, this is perfect, bring it forward. Because then I'm sharing with the rest of the council my opinion on something that should be discussed in a public forum. So that, that's where I stand on that. And so to clarify my concerns with that letter.
I appreciate your clarification.
Okay, thank you.
And just, just to add on to that as well as my feedback in regards to, my proposal was to have unfettered access, basically be able to speak to, to the actual staff. In my proposal, it was just me putting it together. Obviously, we had an attorney that could come back and give us an ordinance that is approved, you know, able to not actually make the change. That would end up basic, basically changing the code of ethics. So what, what I have is, I understand your, if that was the letter that was written, that was basically under the understanding of what I had requested as far as my, my, my proposal. If you guys have not seen that in the new request, that's why I spoke it out loud, to be right into the minutes, so you can understand what the code change is gonna be. Nothing still, will still, everything will still be as requested and going through the city administrator for any changes. But to me, to be able to have a conversation with anybody in the city staff, to me, I wanna be able to do that without having to always know that I have to be reporting of any show, any nature of saying just how the day may be going or how things may be operational. I wanna be able to know those things. That's all I have.
Go ahead, Councilman Malcolm.
I, 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 you know, I'm listening to this and I'm, I'm thinking how interesting this is 'cause it went in circle for me. I think, uh, we were talking about levees and flooding at some point and Brian and I happened to be sitting next to each other for a meeting where we were talking about levy and all the flooding. And I pointed out that the baseball park, Woodland Field, has the special fencing and they're able to keep water back. And I go, why do we know how much something like that costs or how we can get it installed? And Brian says, no, I have no idea. I go, well, maybe if you have some free time, you know, and you, while you're eating lunch or something, find out for us. That, that might be interesting. I mentioned it to the city administrator, how about that? Nothing happened, everybody goes, yeah, it'd probably be very expensive, I don't know. And then tonight, uh, our city engineer comes in with the same thing I've asked questions about three months ago, but it was a casual conversation. It was never ordered, but now we have a proposal where people are doing a s- study to find out, how do we put in the same thing I've asked about three months ago? That's what this, we're looking to do, be able to just ask questions, not because we're ordering stuff, but we're trying to see things we don't understand. Maybe you understand better. John understands stuff about water that I'd never, so I will ask him technical questions or just casually say, well, can we do it this way? It's not telling you what to do, but we're just looking to have an open conversation. And I think that's what's being taken away from this. It's not trying to grandstand, it's just trying to get it done the best way for the city and the people of this town. Thank you.
I think there might be a couple of other people that would like to make a couple of comments. Before we go on to the vote, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Stephanie Romenoli, Human Resources Manager for the City of Musketeen. Uh, I would like to assure, um, in particular, Councilmember Brackett, that staff did write that letter. It was a joint effort, um, primary, primarily authored by one staff person and was a group effort to review and ensure that the information we wanted council to understand was included in that memo.
Okay.
There are a number of people concerned about this ordinance change. Some of those staff members chose not to sign the letter. Doesn't mean that they are, are in agreement with the ordinance change. There are a number of possible, um, issues and concerns that employees have in having council members approaching them on a regular basis whenever they feel they need to have a conversation with staff member. I don't wanna get into the details of those, I think they're outlined in the memo that was written to you. And I hope that you will take staff's, um, information and opinion into serious consideration when you consider this ordinance change.
Thank you. I thi, I think some of the, um, go ahead. Were you done?
No, I said
Oh, you have a question for her. Okay, go ahead.
Was your, was your feedback in regards to the letter, or to the proposal that I had requested, or to the actual amended?
Staff was aware of the amended change.
So what was your letter written, because it said "unfettered" in regards to the very beginning?
That was your initial proposal, but we were aware that, we were, staff was aware that alternate language was being suggested.
Okay, because the alternate language is not the same, as far as just staff going up to city council at a regular basis.
The term "unfettered" may not, but I'm not sure it wouldn't have the same outcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think part of the confusion too here is sometimes the presentation that's given. So I think when staff was informed about that council was talking about this, it came through the city administrator, and maybe his explanation of it was, from his point of view, thinking it wasn't a good idea. Sometimes when you're presented information in such a way, that it's more of a negative than the positive way that I feel I'm hearing council present it in a positive way. And it's not like council has wishes to run around questioning staff all the time and asking them all kinds of questions, and taking up all their time, and now they're going to be on a witch hunt and using all their time, and asking them questions of stuff they don't need to know, and on and on. That's not at all the intention that I hear from council. This council was elected by the people of Muscatine because they had the trust and faith in them to have their best interests at heart. So I would appreciate if council also was given that respect, that they're not just going to go willy-nilly questioning people all the time. They may stop and have a conversation here and there. It's probably going to be very infrequent, but it's been made to be this big problem, and that's yet to be seen, that it could even rise to that level. Councilman Harvey, did you have something you wanted to say before?
Yes, and I don't know if
Down, or directly to Stephanie? Okay.
In general.
You can go ahead.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
I don't think that staff necessarily thinks council's going to be running around willy-nilly approaching staff, but I would hope that council would understand that employees, especially in non-management positions in the city, don't have access to all of the information that management staff has, that there's a process in place for a reason, that we have a city administrator for a reason, and that that role has been in place for 50 years for a reason, and that employees appreciate knowing who they report to, who they're supposed to answer to, whose direction they're supposed to follow. And I think it was also outlined in the memo that staff wrote to you that this has never been about you not being able to stop by and say, "Hi, how are things going? What are you working on today?" You're more than welcome to speak to employees when you see them. I see several of you out and around town. I know other staff members do as well, and we can chat, say hello. If you have a question about what's going on, that's not an issue.
But that's the problem, Stephanie. It has gotten to be an issue for some council. Some council are allowed to say, "What are you working on today? Can you explain it?" Other council haven't been afforded that same consideration, and so this is a way to make it be even for all of the council, and I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's fine. I would respectfully disagree with that assessment. I think the difference has been whether councils are asking operational-related questions that should go through the city administrator.
Thank you. You had some, somebody was
Oh, I think she, I think, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I don't need to make my comment.
I had a comment.
Go ahead.
I'll try to keep this short. Brian Stein, Public Works Director, I just, nothing was conveyed to me through the city administrator. I come out to all the city council meetings, and I attend, and I can hear what's going on, and so I form my own opinions based on the language that I hear. And I do take things personally when it's, when I'm challenged on whether I've fudged numbers to make my project work, or things like that. And I don't want to sit there and then just, and take it, and I worked really hard to knock it up and defend my department and our decisions on the asphalt overlay project. That's resolved itself. I'm not going to worry about that any longer. But, and I have nothing to hide. I'm all for open government, but when I talk to my staff, and we've discussed this, and a lot of my frontline staff, they're not interested in talking to council. Not that they don't like the council. They don't know what to say. It's intimidating to have an elected official come up to them, and so part of the reason I think that, as department heads, we're concerned about this, is we're not afraid of what they're going to say. If you have a question about a vehicle, and they want to know how the vehicle works, the first thing I'm going to do is ask them, "What do you think of the vehicle?" You know, and if they don't like it, they'll tell me. I trust them that they'll tell me that. I don't understand why you wouldn't trust us to tell you what they say. That's the part, and that's the reason that I signed the letter, and that I have these feelings, is that it just seems like there's a breakdown of the trust between staff and council. I don't know why that is. Hopefully, it's nothing that I've done, but that's just a sense that I get. And so then I do get a little bit defensive about that, and maybe I've said some things in emails that I shouldn't have, and I apologize for those, but it gets to be a bit frustrating. So I just wanted to come up here and try to explain my position at least for my feelings and my signing of the letter in support of the other staff and department heads that I work with, and the staff that works for me, that, so I guess that's
Thank you, Brian. I think the trust thing, that the trust piece does come into play, and I think council would ask that the department heads also trust council to use good judgment in following through with this change, that they are going to make good judgment, and certainly not talk to somebody that is uncomfortable or anything like that. I would hope that staff would also trust council. Go ahead, Councilman Sosa.
Go ahead, go ahead, Kelsey.
Okay, so I just, I wanted to respond to that. So, part of, I don't even feel that if I run into you somewhere, Brian, that I can stop and have a conversation with you, without the, no, I'm not saying that's anything to do with you. I'm talking about the current code. The current code is interpreted, it can be interpreted, interpret, sorry.
Interpreted.
Interpreted multiple ways, and has been shown to have been interpreted in multiple ways. We've had some council members that say, "I never have a problem talking to anybody. I can talk to, no, no problem." Yeah, no, I'm
Yeah, I know.
You know, however, other council members have tried to have conversations, and have been, "Oh no, I can't talk to you." You know, and some of the things that have come up in our meetings recently, since, you know, at different points in time, have made me feel like, you know, and I asked Jim, you know, he said hi to me one day, and I said, "I can't talk to you." You know, I have concern, you know, one of the, one of the city staff is in a, is in an outside group with me, and I have concerns about being extremely careful about what I say in that group while that person's present, because I don't want, I want to make sure that nothing comes back that says, "Oh, well, Councilman Brackett violated code." So, well, now we're going to, we're going to need to move forward with the removal process, because Councilman Brackett did this. So it's not you, it's not your staff, it's the way the code was written that is able to be changed depending on the situation. So what I feel that the code that was brought forward to us as an addition to that does is it allows us to have conversations without fear of breaking code, and still allows staff the opportunity to say, "Oh no, I can't, we need to include the city administrator, we need to include my department head." And I'll be honest, unless somebody's in uniform, Brian, and, or they attend these meetings pretty regularly, I don't know, I don't know that, or I come out to your office, I don't know that they are necessarily a city employee. I mean, I'm pretty good with faces, but I don't remember everyone. Now, department heads, sure, because I see you guys all the time. You hear it at the meetings. So, my, you know, this is why this code, to me, the change that the city attorney brought forward, I find acceptable. It allows us to have the conversation. It doesn't make it just open, you know, and unfettered. It gives us the ability to not worry about, "Are we breaking code and risking our seat here while we're trying to represent the public?" So, I respect your, I absolutely respect your stance on that. I think that, as was, has already been said, some of the wording that has come forth as we've been trying to move this forward has not been very clear. And that's why I really, that's why I do support this change that has been brought forward, because I feel it provides staff the protection of, you know, of council. I mean, who knows who will be on the council at some point in time, and that was one of my concerns. So, I think that this is probably the best solution for both sides of the issue at this time. And I would hope, I would hope that if we do proceed forward with this and move it forward, that some additional information is provided to all city staff at all levels that says something along the lines of, "If you have an elected official talking to you in a way that you feel uncomfortable, you report it right away." You know, this is not, this is not to make it so that we can harass people, because that's not, I mean, that's not what we want. At least, I don't, it's not what I want. But, I also, I want to make sure people don't get into a situation like that either. So I think that it's, it's city staff, you know, city administrator and HR need to make sure that people understand they have a right to say, "No, that person keeps talking to me too much. They're asking me questions that make me uncomfortable." And that should be reported immediately. Nobody should put up with that. So that should be something that is part of the educational process of onboarding new members and additional, you know, anytime there's discussion about appropriate behavior and things like that, that should be brought forward so that people understand they don't have to be bothered by somebody if they feel uncomfortable. So that's, you know, that's where I'm at with it, and I'll stop now.
Well, and I don't have anything really more to add. I just wanted to make the, make my position known that, you know, I think the way it was was fine. I don't pretend to interpret it for you. That's, I don't have a law degree, but he does, and he can help us with that. I just, I wanted the staff to know, or, I'm sorry, I wanted the council to know that the staff was, I think, well, I can't speak for all the staff. I was fine the way it was before. I have one boss, and so it works for me. I have no problem with my boss, and everything flows fine as far as I'm concerned. I think that we get you the information that you request using that format. If council chooses to change that, we'll do whatever council says is how it works anyway. So I just wanted to say that. Maybe I said too much, but thank you for your time.
Councilman Harvey?
My comment parallels what, most of what Kelsey just said, that I wanted to be sure whether it's written or unwritten, but it's somehow understood that if a staff member chooses or feels uncomfortable with talking to a council member, they don't have to.
Right.
The only person I could say maybe has to would be Greg, you know, but if anybody else doesn't feel comfortable talking to a council member, fine, they don't have to. And like I said, I don't know if that needs to be in writing, because sometimes you can, if you want to interpret things strictly versus liberally, you know, you can get all sorts of interpretations. You know, this doesn't say they have to, but it doesn't say they don't have to either.
And certainly, there shouldn't be any repercussions if they choose to.
Greg.
Or choose not to.
Or choose not to.
There is an issue that's come up that may not be addressed by that, and that's union, and especially around union time and union negotiations. That I see as a real possible concern with this proposed measure and council interaction with staff. Maybe there needs to be a prohibition around that timeframe. I don't know the answer to that question, but that could be a real, a real problem if union members are trying to affect negotiations by having individual one-on-one conversations with council members, when those discussions are supposed to happen in a certain manner. Second thing I wanted to say was, our staff meetings are open. And when I say open, our staff meeting attendees are able to have an open and honest discussion with myself and their peers, and feel free and comfortable and safe to say what they want to say and have an opinion in that, in those meeting rooms. You would, obviously, tonight, you've got a number of folks. We went through Z. And you have a number of regular attendees from our staff here tonight. But you would also be surprised if they're not here. I know Jerry does, for example. Sorry to point you out, Jerry, but watches it at home on YouTube, or on Channel 2. So your staff members are very well informed of council's opinion, not my interpretation of your opinion. They're here at meetings, they know what's going on in the community, they watch the council meetings, and if it's obvious, even if it's an interest to their department especially, they're going to know what's going on.
Mr. Markward, you've been standing up there. Do you have something to add?
I do. I do. Henry Markward, a member of the general public.
Could you state your name and, your name, you already said your address, I'm sorry.
108 Eagle Watch Road.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak on this, because when this came up, I was rather surprised that you had this in the ordinance, because my experience, my background is as an attorney, I'm a professor at St. Ambrose, is that the idea that, you know, how can, how can a government agency, I mean, looking at the city code, part of your responsibility as the elective official is oversight. And how can you do oversight if you can't reach into the bureaucracy and find out what they're doing? And I'll speak from some experience. I had the honor of serving for four years as a member of the Iowa Environmental Protection Commission, including as its chairman. As chairman, I supervised the largest bureaucracy in the state of Iowa, because it supervised the DNR environmental functions, the State Revolving Fund, and other agencies having to do with the environmental protection. And, I mean, I can't even fathom what would have happened had some member of the legislature had to call me up and say, "Henry, you know, my district includes Washington, Iowa, and I want to go talk to the people at the DNR Washington office, because I'm not sure what they're doing." I mean, the general assembly members, and I would get phone calls all the time as with the director of the DNR from a senator or representative, who do I talk to at the DNR to find out what's going on? Because they have an oversight responsibility to find out what an agency they're doing that is spending the tax money that they're voting on is doing. In the four years that I did that, I'm not aware of a single problem that occurred with a state employee figuring that they were oppressed or made uncomfortable or something like that when in a legislative inquiry. I think there were cases where they were made uncomfortable, and a lot of those cases were situations where the employee had reasons to be uncomfortable if there was a request of information from the political responsible parties. So I would certainly urge you to adopt an ordinance like this. I would caution, and just hearing for the first time how this is being proposed, whether or not, whether or not the section that says that you would have to bring this back to the city administrator is a good idea or not. Because what if you go and talk to somebody, and the complaint is the city manager or city administrator is giving me bad directions? I mean, again, that is something, is your oversight that you have the responsibility to do. So I would be a little, I would, I mean, I think the overall ordinance is a good idea. I would think a little bit about the specific wording of that, because you don't want anything that interferes with your oversight responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your honor.
Yes.
There are two ways to address that. One of them is with the city attorney, as one mechanism. And the second is, this body is supposed to have discussion at the council table, and can only act at the council table. So it's a very simple solution. There's two of them. City attorney or at the council table. If it's a personnel issue, there are appropriate measures for that. The mechanisms are already in place to deal with all of those issues. Very simple.
Anything else? Certainly.
While Max is going up, I would say, one, I mean, we could, to your point, I mean, you could very easily clarify in that code to city administrator, or city attorney, or the council as a whole in session. Something along those lines.
And I think just to add to the administrator's comments in regards to negotiations during unions, I think that should, that could be a subitem or a line item added on to the amendment if you want to potentially
The code section that we would be amending is the code section that specifically identifies the city administrator's duties. So maybe what you guys are talking about might be better served if we were to put it in the council rules or things like that. But we can adopt it somewhere in writing, but I'm not sure it would fit where
Right, okay.
In this spot.
That's fine, that's fine. I just want to be able to acknowledge the comments that the city administrator had.
Please state your name and address.
Max Kaufman, sixteen oh nine Foster Street, Muscatine, Iowa. Your Honor, earlier on in your statements, you said something to the effect of, the, the council members may approach, may approach the staff and the, with, with a question or something of, of some nature, and the staff may be hesitant to respond to them because they thought it was none of their business. Well, it is their business. It is all of the council's business. Everything is their business, because they represent me, and it is my business, because I'm paying the dollar at the end of the day. I'm the citizen of this city. So it is my business, it is your business, and this, this, this addendum needs to go through. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, do we have consensus to move forward and put this on the next agenda?
We had that twenty minutes ago.
Well, we had a first and a second theoretically, we, and we had, that we could, we could get that from the comments, however. Councilman Malcolm?
Yeah, I consent, Your Honor.
Councilman Brackett, Councilman Fitzgerald, Councilman Saseo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brockert, Councilman Harvey. Sounds like we have consensus to move forward and, and have a first reading at our next council meeting of the...
I'd say, as long as some of these concerns can somehow be addressed about, you know, I hadn't thought about what Greg mentioned, that maybe, maybe a city employee wants to lobby a council member for something. Well, that's just as probably, maybe as inappropriate as the council member wanting to go to the city employee and request, make some requests. So, I hadn't thought about it being a two-way street, but it certainly is. Some of these concerns, I don't know if you could write a law that couldn't be abused by somebody.
Right.
Right.
That's why we keep rewriting laws.
Yep, that's it. Your Honor? Yes. I think what it all boils down to is, we need to be sensitive to the feelings of city staff and city employees, and not try to force ourselves on them, but just, you know, work on having relationships so that they feel comfortable, and if they feel intimidated, that, that's fine, too.
Yeah, and I, I would encourage staff to add something either to the handbook, or as a handout, or something along those lines. I would like to, I would like to see it as well, before it goes out. I, you know, I don't know about the rest of the council, but I, you know, I would like to see something to make sure that I do, you know, understand that those concerns are being addressed from that side of things. As far as lobbying this goes, I don't, you know, if one, I mean, if they're, if they're a resident of Muscatine, they, they do have a right to ask for things, but I'm also, you know, if somebody's, if one city staff person's coming to me saying, "Hey, I really, you know, I really need you to do this, I really need you to do this thing," that's not going to have any more impact than, I mean, I, I'm, I'm okay with that, because it's, you know, one person isn't going to make a difference for me. It's, it, you know, not in making decisions for the whole city.
And the, the one thing I would caution you on that, is there is a provision under Iowa Code, Chapter Twenty, for prohibited practices under labor negotiation, and you individually talking with an employee is a prohibited practice.
Right.
So it's better to just say, "You need to have your union rep talk to our city people." Because if they don't get what they want, and it's a one-on-one conversation that's not recorded, we've seen this in council bluffs in Waukegan, other cities, where they say, "Well, the council member talked to me and tried to sway me."
Right.
So just to prevent any of you from having an unfair labor charge, we will make a note to say, if you guys get that, say, "I appreciate your concern, I'm going to pass it on, and I can't talk to you."
And, and that's already state law.
Yes.
So, that could just be something that, at the time of, you know, when it, when we get to the point where we're going to be entering those negotiations, a reminder can be sent to council from staff, and can be, you know, could be sent to the, you know, the union members as well, "Hey, listen, from this time to this time, it's inappropriate for you to have conversations of this nature. You know, make sure you don't, or else you're violating the law." And that, that already exists as state law, so there's no reason to put that into our code.
Correct.
But to just have it as a reminder, "Don't do this, because you'll be breaking the law."
And really, it's just, it's an ongoing issue. Just don't do it.
And I really, I really look at this, too, as a way to protect everyone, because a lot, a lot of, I'm hearing, this has been the code for fifty years, and I'm hearing Phil say stuff like, "Well, I've always went and asked questions and stuff." Theoretically, Phil could have gotten in trouble for that. The staff person who talked to him could have gotten in trouble for that. The times that you didn't, you said there was a couple of times when you just went and talked to him and asked a question. Alan has said he's asked a couple of questions. He could have gotten in trouble for it, the staff person. So even though it's been loosey-goosey at times, and people have, council has had an opportunity to talk to staff, theoretically, it could have been a problem. This cleans that up and protects everyone from that ever being, like Kelsey was mentioning, he could lose his seat on council for doing that. So, this will protect everyone. So, it sounds like we have consensus for that. We're going to move on the, the rest of the agenda, since I'm not hearing anything else for communications. Councilman Harvey, do you have anything to share tonight?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Malcolm?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Brockert?
I'm sure there's people questioning when North Hauser will be open. Jim, would you like to share, please? I heard by the time school starts, which is eight days away.
Mayor, council. We have talked with the contractor. I mean, he's sitting back there, but I am not calling him up here. This is my question to answer. We have talked with the contractor. He has expressed his desire to, to, to meet our desire that, to have it open by school. Now, I am not going to stand here and give you a written guarantee, because there are always things that happen that we can't control, but we are doing everything we can to get it open by the opening of school. I had a conversation with Miller at the school district on that exact same subject today. I told him the exact same thing. We are going to do everything we can to get that thing open.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a second.
Don't go anywhere.
Has there been any change in the topography of Miller's Hill? Has it slid anymore?
It, you mind, Brian? I, I'll answer. It's, it's moved a little bit.
It has.
And it appears to still be moving, but just in conversations today, when we went and looked at it, we're gonna, we're gonna set some survey pins on it and, and start figuring out exactly how much it's moving. Things like that never fail spectacularly or catastrophically. They fail slowly. So, it, 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 it could move, I mean, I'm, I'm not exaggerating, but that thing could move for another year and then come down. So, but we're trying to get some sort of handle on how far and how fast it's moving, or how slow it's moving.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I think it's not moving back uphill.
No, no.
Oh, no.
If it was, you'd have known that at the start of the meeting. Anything else?
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Oh, and Riverbend Neighbors will meet Monday night, seven PM, at Fire Station Number Two. Everyone is welcome.
Councilman Saseo?
I'm just a comment in regards to my condolences to the Estabrook family in regards to the bicycle accident that was last, or actually earlier in this week, and to the family of those in the, outside in the county as well, too, that just had the fire, too. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Brackett?
I just want to, you know, I want to actually make a statement to all city staff right now, that if any communications come from me that sound, if I misphrase something and it sounds like I'm saying, "Go do this," that's not, I, I'm telling you right now that if, if I slip up in my wording, and that's how it sounds, that's not what it is. I am never, at any point in time, giving a directive to any city staff to do something outside of this venue where council makes decision as a whole. So, I want to make sure that they all understand. I am not doing that. If I say something that comes across that way, I apologize it came across that way, but that's not my intention. Right here, right now, very clearly stating, no matter what I tell you, I'm not giving you a directive. So, thank you. That's all I got tonight.
All right, thank you. Staff?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
I just have a few things. First of all, reminder, we have no council meeting next week, or the next week for that matter, but next week, you're encouraged to attend the Almost Friday Fest on the riverfront instead of coming to council meeting. Our city guests, recently, we had Chris Jasper with Muscomm on, and Ed Chamberlain is doing Relay for Life, August twenty-fourth, on the riverfront, from four to eleven, if any of you have an opportunity to join that fest, that festivity to raise money for Relay for Life. Also, coming up, we have Jenna Wagner from Kiwanis Club, and Sue Johansson from the League of Women Voters. Next, I'd like to invite everybody, and I talked about this briefly at our last meeting, but Relay of Voices is a project that Greg Jenkins with the Chamber and I've been working on for about a year and a half. There's a couple of people who are running down the river, from the Mississippi at the top down to the bottom, and they're stopping at a few periodic chosen towns. Muscatine is one of them chosen. They're going to be here for an afternoon, and they want to meet a few people from our community and hear more about our life here in Muscatine. At the end, they will be putting all of the stories that they've learned into a project, and will be able to have access to that when it's all said and done. So, Sunday at one PM at the River View Center, they will be there to meet with anybody that lives in Muscatine that would like to join us. We hope you are able to come. But I did want to preface that with letting everyone know that if you do come, the elevator doesn't work. So as a result of the flooding, there's been some problems with the elevators, so if you come, please know that you will have to walk upstairs to get to the top of the River View Center where we'll be meeting. Lastly, our next coffee with the mayor is Tuesday morning, August twentieth, at nine AM. We're going to meet at Sunnybrook, so that folks who live there have an opportunity to join in and have coffee and conversation with us as well, but it's still certainly open to the public. So the next time we have a council meeting will be after Labor Day, September fifth. So everyone, have a nice holiday weekend. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
Or adjourned.